I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll take you all for being here. I'm slowly getting right here. That will move right along. I guess we will take those steps. All that talk out there. Being able to myself.
Student recognition first?
Yes. So we'll move right into 3.01 student recognitions. Mr. Bailey, looks like you're up first.
I'm ready. December bucket fillers, oh boy, here we go. Zelena Watson, Rainey Spethman, Atlas Waples, Ava Brennan, Logan Krieger, Rainey Spethman, oh twice, Montana Butcher, Olivia Zedima, Wyatt Peterson, Creed Hill, Brooklyn Pedraza, Tyrell Small, Tristan Holt, Jonathan Penau, Ethan Petros, Carly Cook, Kiki Scalp Kane, Grant Dennehy, Kalib Beagle, Gavin Berthusk, Kate Nelson, Fallon Big Left Hand, Liam Kyle, Jack Krebs, and Brian Cook. And there is a story of doing good behind every one of those names. So that makes it pretty special, so thank you.
Good man.
So I have student of the weeks. We have John Burns, Cesar Ontivera, Nina Watson, Cooper Clark, Jacob Willoughby, Beatrix De Liosa, Kenny Spethman, and Henry Sessions. And from that, supposed for sixth and seventh graders, we didn't have any eighth grade nominations this time. So sixth grade was Cooper Clark and seventh grade was Henry Sessions for student of the month. We have December students of the month, freshman Brooklyn Cox, sophomore Audrey Bell, junior Taylor Small, senior Kada Slowol, and our be a buddy not a bully winner is Cash Burton.
Thank you very much.
Can I add staff recognition?
Yes.
So I would like to applaud the special ed staff for having their error rate be less than 1% for the monitoring that happened for Colster Elementary District and the Colster High School District.
That's awesome.
Very, very grateful.
I applaud my special ed staff. Excellent paperwork.
I also have a staff recognition also. For Mr. Croft. He had had a trifecta. He completed his master's degree in floral conducting, was named to the regional advisory board for Montana Coral Directors Association, and at Croft featured him as one of their music teachers.
He had a big, big December.
Congratulations. All right, with that, we move on to 4.01 correspondence, plug, participations. This is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda I will be accepted when that item comes up during the meeting. Interested persons may also submit views in written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting, and those comments will be brought to the attention of the board during the meeting. Do we think we have some public participation? Come on up.
Don't you think that I'm sitting in the front row? This is hot off the press, so I didn't get a chance to get it to anybody because I just came from foresight. I've had some, and I understand that you can't act on it or anything here, but I just want to make sure this doesn't happen to someone else. Of course, went through a nasty divorce last year with my wife, and she changed Kimberly's name on programming. She didn't change it, she asked for the name to be changed. It was hyphenated. Imagine sitting at a ball and you'd see your daughter's name with a hyphen in it. I went through the procedure at the time, talked to the building principal and said, I like this, said hey, it'll be corrected, which I had a follow-up email saying that her legal name would be used. This would have been that day that came in on January 18th for the 19th game program. I expressed concerns on Friday, the program for January 20th was changed back to her legal name. Figured that was a done deal. Then this basketball season, it comes up again. And I see her name changed on the programs. Once again, I ask, I thought this was addressed by your own procedures, that this is taken care of. So we were revisiting it. Again, I talked to them, I was told send an email, I did that, figured it was done. More phone calls happened that hey, we want to change. They were saying, I want to change the name and I should have that right. Well, if my daughter likes Kobe Bryant, can I come in there and have her last name changed to Bryant? I was told it would be her legal name. So there was a hearing after that, which I was unaware of, I had to read it in the paper, and I keep showing up the games where her name's hyphenated in there. Well, it got changed. The game got canceled, the one that was in question after January, we had one Thursday. So Thursday's game shows up and I'm at the game, and everybody else's name is announced, but my daughter's last name. And again, how can I sit there after I've been discussing this for the last year almost about a name change? And then in your policy, which you guys have a ton of policy. So I don't know if there's anything in there specifically stating that, but what I did find was with student privacy rights, that all fundamental parental rights exclusively reserved for parent-child without obstruction or interference by a government entity is consistently recognized in state and federal courts and required by state and federal law and district policy. I don't see anything in district policy stating that anybody can go in there and do whatever with their name. Whenever I brought that concern, it's like, well, other people have done it in the past. Well, I'm not other people. I did not consent to it last year, and I'm not consenting to it this year. The hearing happened today, and I have printed out court document order denying petition for change of her legal name. I don't want to see it for myself or anybody else that goes through this to have their name sit in a basketball game and say, and then days after, why didn't they announce your daughter's name at a basketball game? Why is it in the program that way? That's not her legal name. So I'm, I don't know where to go.
You're fine, go ahead.
Okay. I've got the documentation. I don't think it's right that that happens, even though I went through the procedures. And the reason why I'm not going to the superintendent is because this, I don't want to show up at another game and have a name not announced or see it in there where it's hyphenated. So that's why I'm coming straight to the board.
Okay.
I wouldn't answer any questions, I realize that there can't be any discussion on it formally, but if there was something that needs documentation, an email providing whatever I've stated, the court paperwork, court order stating where her name is, because I don't think that it's right to use a school as a, one parent uses school to put the other parent to where my daughter even says we test.
I think with what you have and everything else, we have enough to, we can correct this. Moving forward.
I have no problem writing it, so.
No. You're fine.
Do we need that on file?
I would have, I would send a copy to the principal.
Yeah, I would do that.
Yeah.
No questions.
I appreciate you following it up because, I mean, the school didn't want to get in the middle of that either, so.
I understand that. And last year, whenever, and that's how I took it. I don't want school involved in it. It was public. So I was administrative, that was down in here, we're revisiting again, that's why I'm in this room, to state that. Because I don't want some other parent, well, I don't care whose side it is, I don't want some other parent to see that without legally being done. And that's why I told them it's going to happen, and it didn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Anything else? Crystal? Good? Okay. Move on to 5.01 consent agenda.
I move the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, more than a second. Yes.
So this 5.03 extracurricular claims, this is what I was talking about when we had the budget discussion about athletics and activities, and this is in every single meeting. And this is where you can go to see what the balance is for every club, athletics, everything, and then all the vouchers that were paid that month, plus all the deposits that came in that month. So if anyone ever has questions about any of those funds, this is in every single of our regular board meetings in that consent agenda.
I also had a question for Brittany. How long do we? Or we cancel them, or is it usually two years or so?
It depends. It depends that we try to do it every year, but there are some payroll hasn't been done for a while, so payroll's different. But ours, usually the auditor will say something every year, like hey, you need to clear some of these up. And so Lorna does clear up the ones that are on the district side, at least once a year. Sometimes it's really hard trying to get an indemnity bond with somebody and having them fill out the paperwork and go into that process because our warrants never expire. So if we have something missing, you have to go through this other process to issue them anyway. So, but every year is our goal. Usually it's spurred by the auditor.
Anything else? With that, Wade?
Hi.
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 All right. 7.01 for agenda governing calendar. I think we're on track with that.
The permissive levies we were going to talk about next, due to the next meeting for January.
And the impact date.
And then we have rehire fall extracurriculars on there. Tom, will you be bringing that to the next January meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else I think we have on here?
All right, with that, we move into new business. 8.01 is wrestling out of state travel.
So wrestling is planning on making their annual trip to the Morcroft Wrestling Event in Wyoming. The parents will be paying for their hotel rooms. It's actually probably the cheapest wrestling weekend we'll have all year. So they will be heading down there, stopping in Broadus at a mixer, and then heading down to the tournament in Morcroft.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves CHS wrestling to travel to Morcroft, Wyoming, January 24th and 25th, 2025.
Second.
I heard Ted. Okay, more than a second. Any discussion on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade?
Hi.
Ted?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Serena?
Hi.
Good luck, boys. It's a good tournament.
Yep, girls too.
Girls too. 8.02 BPA? Orlando?
I always use this as a learning experience for the students. So we have a lot of new kids this year, pretty excited for them. It's a small group, but we're getting there. Crystal Cox.
Yay.
Is our business person and going to be one of the advisors for BPA, so very glad to have her along, along the way. I've been involved with BPA for a lot of years. Last year, I was elected to the Board of Trustees for the national level. So I am their business representative. I filled a vacant spot that came in, so I'll be running again this year to fill in three of the positions. So it's a kind of awesome thing. It's pretty interesting to be on that big of a board, but anyways. So they're going to be asking for permission, and I have Brayden Bigman, he's very excited. He's our president. He's our only returning member who went to Nationals last year. We also have Nathan Big Left Hand, who was a member. New this year is Cameron Martinez, Gwendolyn Garbin, Riley Sims, and Ashley Zulow. And the nice thing, they competed at regionals in December, and each and every one of them qualified for state. I'm not going to repeat everything that they did, I put it out there, so it'll be a good bunch this year going into state. State this year is a little different. We will be doing testing here in our home school. We did that for regionals too, because of lack of space and buildings for the size of organization that we have to do the testing. So their physical competitions will be done at state. So this year, Brayden will talk about it, but where we're going. And so we're still fundraising, we need lots of money. We raise all of our money on our own, so we'll accept any donations that anybody wants to provide and send our way. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brayden.
All right. So like Brendan said, my name is Brayden Bigman. And so I'm the president of the BPA Club, which is Business Professionals of America. And so our trip this year is to Orlando. And then, so why, why we go to Nationals? So at Nationals, like we help behind the scenes, like organizing, like awards, like given to like other students, like for their competition, for their competitions. And we also help with like registration, so like getting like chapters registered for the Nationals. But then we also compete at Nationals, like if we make it in our respective competitive events. And then, so what we do, so outside of work, you know, we like to explore the city. So like last year, we went to Chicago. So there's like us in Chicago, like we went to the Cubs game, we went to the theater there, and then we also like looked at the beam. And then, so there was the four of us, me, there's me, Phillip, and then Francesca, and then Sophia, the president from last year. So at Lorne Orlando, we'd like, we'd go to Disney World and like Universal Studios. And then, so this is the cost for six. It's, it's, I will say it's quite expensive for a trip to Orlando. So it's like 700 each for each person. So there's six of us going, and then the meals would be 1600, and then the lodging would be roughly almost 8000. And then the incidentals would be 4500.
In that picture, go ahead, real quick. In the previous picture, the students have the ability to interface with the CEO at that time, Dr. Stephen.
All right, so last year, we raised over like $1,000 for Special Olympics. And so, you know, we donated that to Special Olympics. So last year, we were rewarded with the Special Olympics award. And then, so that is our chapter recognition. And then we get that reward at Nationals. And then I also want to say thank you guys, and if you have any questions.
Students were also recognized on, they televised this, and so the company that puts us on Cybus, because the kids are doing so much behind the scenes for the national awards that evening, they recognize them on stage and on camera and all that, just as a way for them to say thank you for everything that they do, that people don't see how hard they work.
How many times have they gotten that Special Olympics award?
Quite a few years now.
That's a lot of cotton candy.
Just got the machine fixed.
What events did each of you qualify in?
So I did, I qualified in advanced interview skills. You guys want to say what you registered? I qualified in web design and part of a team of these guys.
Nice.
Nathan?
Who'd you qualify in?
A lot of the open tests is what a lot of them qualified in. Brayden also qualified in accounting.
All right, accounting.
Which he's never really done, and he took, you know, second place on a lot of the other kids. So we've never been to practice with him, so he really knows what accounting is.
Well, Crystal's an expert now.
Ashley took second place in extemporaneous speech, or was it third place?
It was third.
Third place, so she will compete on, she's never done it before in her life, and she beat out a lot of the other students who've done it for a few years. So Gwendolyn took quite a few first, second places in a lot of the open, open tests as well. So they did really well overall. And Riley joined our team, of course, after regional registration, so she will be a part of the web design team that she's helped with and all that.
Thank you guys for coming. I appreciate that.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves CHS BPA to travel to Orlando, Florida, May 3rd through 11th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, more than a second. Any public comment on this agenda item?
It's going to be really hot there.
Better than Morcroft. Sorry.
Morcroft is a nice town. Any further board? Wade?
Hi.
Ted?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Serena?
Hi.
Good luck, guys.
Have fun.
Close up.
Mrs. Dennehy had a family emergency, so she's not here. And three of her students are out of town and we're not able to get here. So Nathan is a one-man show.
So we're requesting out-of-state travel from May 31st to June 9th for COSA. Throughout the week, we will explore DC and interact with students from all across the country. COSA will help us learn more about our history and government. While considering a variety of viewpoints, we will, we will be encouraged to be informed and engaged. We will get to meet with our state representatives in New York. We will get to go to Central Park, the Chaplain Museum of Art, Times Square, Broadway, Upright Battery Bar, Ellis Island, Statue of Liberty, financial district, Wall Street, 9/11 monument and museum, Brooklyn Bridge, Little Italy, and Rockefeller Plaza. We're looking forward to this trip. All exciting things we will see and be able to see.
I have a couple more notes from Wendy. The cost is 3,600 for each student, and they've fundraised to cover that. They work like the Christmas parties for Talon and I think the mine, and then they do the Facebook auctions. So they're working hard, and I don't know if any of you have gone on that close-up trip, but three of my kids have gone, and it's definitely worked out.
Did you say you're going to the Holocaust Museum as well?
9/11 museum.
Oh, 9/11. I know my wife went to the Holocaust Museum, which she went, so.
Thank you.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve close-up out-of-state travel to Washington DC and New York, May 31st through June 9th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, more than a second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade?
Hi.
Ted?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Serena?
Hi.
Thank you.
Have a good time. 8.04.
All right, so I'm recommending that we approve Brittany Allen's request, excuse me, transferred to payroll, offer a monthly interim business manager contract until a job is filled and training can be completed.
Can I add something?
Just me.
Okay.
I was waiting for that.
So I think when, this was not easy to do, but when the payroll clerk handed me her resignation, it was just something triggered me that, you know, this is an opportunity that I need to look at. And so I thought about it a lot, prayed about it a lot, gave it some time. I didn't have much time, obviously. And I just saw it as an opportunity to spend more time with my family. And so I need to take that opportunity if the, if the board is willing to, and I offered to help with the district clerk position. I would never leave that in a lurch. I want to help that person be successful. And so I'll help wherever is needed until that's filled and trained and all of that. And I would imagine it's probably going to take at least six months to train. And even at that point, you're not training fully because there's things you only do once a year. But I think that's the best decision for me, and I'm actually looking forward to it. But my, I still am very dedicated to this district, and I think that I've shown you guys in the last couple, well, I've been here for, this is my seventh year here. So I am very invested in what we're doing, so. And I appreciate all you guys' support, you guys have been awesome, so. Especially over here too, don't start crying.
All right, you're following these kids.
Why don't you start? She's going to leave your office, Chris.
I appreciate you. She's just done an amazing job, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Marie, does it bring it in there?
Sorry, Steve, don't look at, just don't look at me right now.
You.
Well, do we need to approve the transfer? Or is that just a decision that you make? Because I've never seen a transfer come to a board before.
I don't think you need to approve it, it's just all the other little.
Just the contract.
Yeah, yeah, the interim contract.
Yeah.
And that a monthly, or, and are you setting her salary, or do we need to set her salary?
You guys have.
For hourly rate?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know the recommendations and whatnot, it was discussed, so.
For hourly rate?
Yeah.
But we need to discuss an interim contract. Okay.
Yeah.
So the interim contract would complete all of the business manager duties and clerk until someone's hired. So if we start with six months, we need to assign, do we have to assign a wage to that tonight?
I think you probably should, because I started payroll duties tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I started them already.
She was at Salem's last week.
Okay, so when Brittany told me this, I kind of looked up some numbers. So payroll clerk job starts at 20?
2150.
2150. But we figured Brittany's kind of more qualified than entry level, so.
She's done it a couple of years there.
$25 an hour. If we put her in at that, that would be $52,000 a year. She's currently making $81,120, so the difference is 29,120. So if we try to keep her where she is now while she's doing two jobs, that would be a stipend of $4,853 a month for six months. Plus, that would make her eligible for overtime since she's doing two jobs.
She's going to have her hands full.
I don't know what you guys think. That was just.
I think it sounds reasonable, I mean.
That was a conversation that Serena and I and Scott had. If this was what she wanted to do, that's the direction we're headed, so.
What was it? I'm sorry, again.
So if we pay her $25 an hour, that's $52,000 a year.
Okay.
And her current salary is $81,120.
Okay.
So it's a difference of 29,120. I divided that by six months.
Okay.
So that's $4,853 a month stipend.
For six months.
Yes.
Yes. To be doing that.
And payroll.
And payroll.
Yeah, yeah, so she'd get her $25 an hour as an hourly employee.
Right.
So if she works over 40 hours a week, she gets overtime. Or you're not.
But we're not.
So you can't really like, do, have two separate, you can't have a salary and an hourly.
Right.
So if we pay her hourly and then give her a stipend.
Okay, that makes sense in my head.
But then she could still have overtime if she works over 40 hours a week. Since she's doing two jobs, I thought that was fair.
Yep.
But then, at the end of the six months, we can reevaluate if we need to bump that out two more because we hired someone at the end of the six months to get that training in. And we can always talk about that at that time too. But she didn't want to have like no end date on that.
Forever.
Because I didn't want, I just wanted to say interim, and she said no.
She's like, I need an ending. I don't think I can do both for too long.
If that sounds fair, I mean, unless you guys have other concerns or options.
Because right now, I mean, if you had to average number of hours per week, about how many would you say you work right now?
It fluctuates so much because of the demands of the job. It just depends, like right now, I'm, I can stick to probably 45. I got impact date coming up, I got a lot of things that just, you know, end up with due dates and things like that, so it's really hard to tell. But some weeks it's 60, sometimes it's more than that, you know. And with the payroll, I'm probably looking at quite a bit more. But I'm hoping, hopeful, hopeful, that it'll be just like putting on a whole pair of pants and I can just do it quickly, but, you know.
And then there's when she's getting that budget ready in the summertime. And then there's when she's getting that budget ready in the summertime, a lot of hours.
Yeah.
And some good detailed work on her part.
But that's what I feel like would be a benefit to the district, too, if I'm able to help. You know, if we do get somebody hired, you know, by that time, it would be a perfect time for me to step in and help that person because you just can't do that, you know, blindly, I guess. And so that like probability of us getting another district clerk from another city that's done it already is probably pretty low, but you never know. You never know.
Well, I feel like Colster Public is so different from all the other districts, too, though, that...
Yeah, yeah.
Even if you come in with that experience, it's... We have to have that handed down. Yeah. Information shared, so.
With the six months, I mean, can you explain why you chose six months?
She chose six months.
Okay, okay, that's perfect. She figured she could hold up that long.
I wonder if we went three months and then renewed it again. If, I mean, because worst-case scenario, we can't find anybody.
Right, right.
And we're still in the search. I would hate for it to be six months down the road and, you know, you still doing everything, you know? I don't know. I don't know if there's an upside or a downside.
So I don't know. Even if we got someone in, let's say this month, it's going to take a minimum of six months to train that person.
Right, that's what I'm figuring is if we did it three months, then we could extend it out another six months from that three months rather than waiting six months and then going, well, all right, you know, let's extend it for another two months or three. I don't know. I don't know if that...
Yeah.
If that changes anything.
I think if you get to that point and we haven't found anyone, I would be forced to probably stay as district clerk and hire somebody in payroll because I don't, I really don't think, unless something crazy happened. But I don't think that I can maintain that for six months. So even on my own, I would be coming here to the board to probably have something changed because payroll is easier to fill than the district clerk. But I am hopeful that we'll get somebody, so.
So we want to do three?
I think we stay with the six because I really don't think we're going to see a lot of applicants until closer to the end of the school year. Right? So.
I don't know, though, because this is just an accounting position.
And we could be surprised.
School position.
We could be surprised, but I think we leave it at six. And then we can address that in three months. Say we find somebody right away. Then we can address that then. But I think it gives us time.
Okay.
So really, it's just the same wage. It's just removing her from salary to hourly.
For the payroll job.
For the payroll job.
Yeah.
And then we're giving her a stipend.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
For the difference, yeah, for six months, yep.
With the opportunity to earn overtime, though, which she doesn't have now.
Right, right, right. Yep.
Okay. So I move that the Colster... All right, I move that the Colster Board of Trustees approves the transfer of Brittany Allen, the payroll clerk, with a hourly wage of $25 an hour and a six-month contract for interim business manager with a monthly stipend of $4,853 in the 24-25 school year.
Got it.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public discussion on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Serena.
Thank you, guys.
And we need to set the starting wage, set the starting salary for business manager for that search, someone who opens up.
Yep.
So a couple of years ago, we originally had it at...
65.
65. We had no applicants. We bumped it up to 75.
75. Yeah.
And then we had a couple. I was thinking 80 at this point.
Yeah.
To open. I mean, it's basically hiring a CFO. And I think we need to be clear about that with that advertisement. That's what it is, because some people look at business manager and it's not really a business manager. I mean, it's an accounting position. So hopefully, that advertisement can show that.
Yeah, I would ask you to work with Ryan on getting that posted. Of course, we need it posted as soon as possible as well, but make sure that's...
And it needs to go, not just to the website and Facebook, but it needs to go maybe My City Job Service. I don't know who else we could put.
I have a group, too, of just district clerks and business managers. And so there's, I hate to say it, but there's always postings of people making their spot. So I'll put that in there as well.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Does it have to work nerd in?
I can say that because they're...
No.
Ours does. Several times.
I wouldn't start nerd.
Are you sure?
Sure. Okay. So 80 sound okay to everybody for starting?
Yeah.
And that's a non-affiliated, so it's negotiable. That would just be the advertising part of it.
Yeah. Big job.
It is, Wendy.
It is.
You've done really well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Do I need to motion that?
It just says...
No, I don't think so. Just the...
Okay. Because it is negotiable, so depending on who applies.
Yeah, this is just the advertisement for now, so okay.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Presentations, there's a few for you for your information. Thank you for what you've done, though. And 8.06.
Okay, I've got one recommendation for a district substitute. That'd be Brandon Watson.
Oh, nevermind. You go first, sorry.
Okay.
Thought we missed one.
No.
Nope, sorry.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Brandy Watson, contracted employee for a district substitute for the 24-25 school year. Okay.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Go up.
Cool.
Brandy raised her hand.
Oh.
Okay, for the meeting.
Brandy, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Hey, just looking to help out. I know we've been short-staffed with custodial at Pine Butte, so it wouldn't be full shifts every time, but just looking to help out the district and keep our building looking great. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Anything else? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. 8.07.
This is the same goal monitoring survey we used last year. And when I created it, I just used our strategic plan goals. And then Evan put it into a Google form so we could get it submitted. So I didn't see the need to change it this year because we haven't changed any of our goals. So once we get this approved, then we can look at getting it...
Putting it out.
Putting it out to everybody again.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the survey for strategic plan monitoring as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. 8.08. Mr. Dussold.
So there are several proposals at the MHSA conference coming up this weekend. Most of them are pretty straightforward, nothing really complicated or controversial. The first is going to be students below ninth grade. They want to change it so that you can compete concurrently as an eighth grader in the same sport. Like currently, the big one that would affect would be basketball, boys' basketball. So if you had an eighth grader that was playing eighth-grade basketball, they could also play up at the high school if they needed to. I don't think it really would have a tremendous effect on us because our teams are pretty well-armed out. It makes sense because they were able to compete in other sports, so like, for example, volleyball, they could play, they could have played, like we had the two girls last year playing high school volleyball. And they also could have played middle school basketball at the same time. So it just, it makes it more equitable. It kind of takes away the title line issue of girls being able to play at the middle school and at the high school. And the boys don't be able to be able to play at the high school. So that's a simple one. They also changed the transfer rule. So if you move within 50 miles of your school, you'll have to, you'll have to sit out for half of the remaining school days before you're eligible. Has to be a full and complete move. You have to move with your family. And so they, again, they're just cleaning that up to make it fair. The, the... Oh, you can get awards. They're changing. You can get awards for competing in sports, like if you're in a tournament or something. You can get awards up to $500 in value. So you could get t-shirts or trophy, well, trophies are exempt, but things like t-shirts or even gift cards can't total more than $500 in a school year. But you can actually get that stuff for entering. Before, it was illegal for you to get, you know, like a uniform or things like that. So now they're making it so that you can accept that stuff either as awards or like as a gift bag for entering the contest. So again, it just opened it up a little bit more for the kids, allows the kids to get something a little bit more out of it, make some of these tournaments more attractive.
Who keeps track of that? Because it's, I mean, it's, it said $100 for each event on what was redacted and then $100 for a year. So who keeps track of where kids are at?
So I'll find out this weekend.
Okay.
I'm going to assume that's going to probably...
Only you, yeah, probably.
But, yeah, and then to go along with that, they have changed the amateur rule. Name, image and licensing is now a thing for high school kids. It'll be the death of us all in the renaissance of sports. But it's already working great at college, though. So kids, if they do, if they are going to try to capitalize on their name, image or license, they cannot use anything from the school to do that. So like, we had a football player who was an all-world football player. He couldn't run around with a Colster helmet and a Powerade ad. He could go around with a black helmet and a black jersey and, you know, but they couldn't film, they couldn't film a commercial on our football field. So it's just, it's a way to try to maintain and define amateur status and what the rules will be. This is something that is happening. 38 states now have the law. I actually asked my friends back down south. Georgia has this. And they, actually, one of the high schools in Georgia poached a quarterback from another state to get him in there with name, image and licensing stuff. So basically offering him money to come to Vegas for their high school. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be a mess. I'm glad it won't. So that's on the future there. Then penalties. This one, this one will actually be great for us. If a fan is ejected from sporting event, they cannot come to the next three sporting events. So it kind of gives a little bit of teeth to that and it standardizes it across the state, makes it a little bit easier on districts in setting penalties for, you know, trying to curb bad fan behavior, which, you know, I think we do a pretty good job with our people. But sometimes some of the visiting crowds can be a little harsh. So, but anyways, that's to add some teeth to that with our fans and to, you know, try to bring sportsmanship back to sports. And the last one is they want to switch the physical exam so that if you get a physical exam, it will be good for two years. If you get it after May 1st, it would be good for the next two school years. If you get it before May 1st, it would be for the current school year and the following year. So it's just to reduce the burden on medical providers as well as on families to have to run out and get those. They would still have to do the history, the pre-exam history that we have to do every year. They just would not have to go do a doctor's exam every year. So, and this has been recommended by their medical advisory board. So it's, the doctors are saying this is okay. We also need to get one notification, and this will hit near and dear to some of our hearts, of something that they're adding for discussion. And that is looking at doing something about divisional volleyball tournaments. Because nobody wants them, basically take a financial bath for the divisional volleyball tournaments. And so they're looking for, you know, they're looking for options on those. They want to open a discussion about that. So we'll see where that goes, but that should be interesting.
These are all just proposed.
Right, we will be voting on them. And when we meet again, I'll let you know which ones passed and which ones didn't. Yeah.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees appoints Activity Director Tom Dussold as our district voting representative for the MHSA annual meeting.
Okay.
Okay, motion second. Any public discussion on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. 8.09. Handbook.
Okay, we've got the district substitute handbook, updates, mostly correcting names, new names, HRs replacing some of the places where it said superintendent and so forth, some RM updates, a little bit of procedures, how attendance is done now, salaries paid, just basically kind of updates to the current practices that we have.
I move that Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the substitute handbook for 24-25 school year as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public discussion on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving right along. 8.01, I'm in reports. So against NASA, you're up first.
We sent them in, correct? Questions?
Did you have anything that you needed to draw attention to, I guess is what I'm getting at? I've already read them.
The only thing I was going to draw attention to was that we're currently at almost $1,200 top now, please, hell.
Nice.
If anybody wants any floor, I still have some floor.
Oh, yeah. My dad's going to come talk to us.
But we're working on that metal shop, so we're going to get it from that.
Nice.
I was actually in there today and it looks really good.
It's getting there.
Mm-hmm.
You could actually get it.
You could actually get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I took my kids to that New Year's Eve swim. I thought I was gonna be dead, because usually when I take them, there's like five kids. Yeah. Eighty-five kids.
It's been passed to the first.
Holy cow.
It was crazy.
To keep track of that, to have that data.
It was insane. I have never seen the pool alcohol before.
No, it was good. I didn't ask.
Four.
Okay.
I didn't have anything for you, unless you did, Mrs. O'Toole.
I don't have anything to add, no. Any questions? Everybody has anything?
I thought the science club stuff was cool. They dissected a bear's heart.
Yeah, she will be bringing, um, the proposed request and the next board meeting to go to Northwest or wherever.
Yeah, to get more heart.
Yeah. No, it's a viper with that. Yes, they all bring them in. Last year, we had like a, of the end of the Ryan's Room where our refrigerator freezer went out. That was fun for the custodial staff in the summertime. No, I just wanted, I guess, since you're on, those kind of things, I just wanna, um, just say how proud I am of our sponsors and how, you know, they're, they're doing such great things and and they sent all this, all these to me, and they just keep going. I mean, it's just amazing on the things that they plan, you know, the upcoming things, so very proud of the things that they are doing and, and ready to go for the other things. Um, just the play, want to point that out, that's coming up, that's, that's starting, so that's, you know, open up to everybody, to the community.
When is the play this year?
What is it or when is it?
What?
I don't know. She just turned in the script today to me, always looking at that, um, the requisition for that, they got to hold on that this past week. So it's all approved through the students who wanted to, to be there, but it is the thirteenth of March. I'm excited.
Angie.
Mr. Rayly, anything you need to add?
All I have to say is, if you ever have the opportunity to spend the day before holiday break in an elementary school, you have it. You're gonna learn something. It is.
It was real that day.
Yeah. It's amazing. So, no, that's all everything I have to report, so staff's doing amazing work down there right now, so.
I thought it was cool you guys gave out those turkeys and hams at the Christmas concert too.
That was cool.
Yep. Nice thing, Noel's, Noel's program was fantastic.
Yes, her decorations were so cute this year too.
Yep, and the, the community support was amazing.
Yeah.
That auditorium was.
It was packed.
That was pretty neat to see.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirchner or Jen, do you guys have anything you need to add? Looks like things are moving along.
Things are moving along, yep. Yeah, getting to do some curriculum work, so very exciting.
Good.
Good.
That's what we want to hear.
Yeah. I read that, that you were working hard on aligning the ELA, and so that's, that's awesome.
Well, and the, the teachers, their dedication, I mean, one of the worst parts about teaching is subplans. And it's just really stressful and hard to be away from your class, and I've just been working with teachers making subplans and taking some time after their classes to, to meet with me and.
Nice.
Uh, they've been working great together, so good, it's been a lot of fun.
Good.
We all agree, you guys are dope.
I know, look at that. So I'll just point out, since not everyone probably read it, but, um, one thousand three hundred and fifteen total items were looked at in the elementary districts of pre-K through eighth grade. And there was only nine findings, so for it, so nine little items, and if you ever look at an IEP at the elementary school, it's usually seven pages. As you move to middle school, there's more. Um, and then the high school, it's four hundred and thirty-four title items, but they look at less IEPs, and then they also don't review all the files, they look at students who graduate, so that's why the numbers are less, and there's only four grades, so that's nine through twelve. But the high school had three findings, so less than one percent error rate, it was actually point zero zero six eight at the elementary district and point zero zero six nine. So we have to correct those files by January thirty-first, and then to show that we know how to do those items that there were errors on, they will pick one to two files on those until the end. So it's a process that I'm glad only happens once every five years, but that's a really good rate.
Yeah, that was fantastic.
The nerds like that.
I like the precision too.
To be more precise, she even said.
That was just for me.
Next time, we don't put, divvy it out, like, these are files and all of that, so.
You said Jen's taking.
Alright, with that, moving on to, uh, the girls.
Hard to act to follow all these guys. I don't have that fun of stuff to share with. Jammaday or whatever, before holidays and black helmets and selling wood and stuff. But I will wave Jen's flag because I was, I, it took me about four different meetings for the E-Graph, they had a glitch to, to close out, and then once we finally got to some of it, I know the lady I was working with, um, there was some question about the preschool, just making sure everything was right, and she knew it was Jen, and she said, well, if it's Jen doing it, Jen Arson, then it's right. I mean, so I got an email what she referred to as far as her team and just these three findings and whatnot, of course, they were, they were waving Jen's flag too, so wasn't just her team, we had a awfully good leader going through that, so thank you, Jen, for all that you do with your staff and with our kids, so appreciate it. Um, and then I, I know with Derek too, with that curriculum alignment, one of the highlights of my week, um, is meeting Derek, because he's young and he's new, and it's fun, and um, we met today and I think we keep, we get into like an hour, hour and a half, and, um, somebody else is waiting, so I had to cut that short, I guess shorter, but, uh, it is exciting what he's got going on, so we go into a lot of discussions from assessment to grading to this alignment thing, just, just it's been great to, to see him working, I know he's worked more with the principals than me, so they've all been, been helping him along too, but he's got, uh, this is a doctor over here, Dr. Kirchner, I probably remembered that today, so it's amazing having someone, the doctor done staff. He's got two master's degrees, and he's a heck of a nice guy. If he just, I don't know, just easy to get along with, and I know he's been the, I guess, the spark with these teachers to get them to do these things, so anyway, we're glad to, to have him more as well as everybody else, but, uh, anyway, okay, so the boring stuff that I've been doing, um, Fintank Thursdays have just kind of picked up, they, they got counseled for a while, it's super tense. Um, so working on some legislation coming up. Today I got an email, kind of the first one really, um, education-wise, so I'll be getting into that more and giving more information on that, HB three ninety-three, um, the public school, the private school money that's coming from public schools is a big, big issue out there, um, so that was just some, so that was, those are two different topics recently, they usually take one topic each, each meeting. Like I said, it's gonna get more and more legislative stuff coming at us, but nothing really final there yet. CMAS, kind of the same thing, the Stars Act, you know, the money and whatnot for teachers, the ACT funding, looks like there's gonna be some more coming from the state possibly, all these things are up there right now with legislation, so that'll be coming, um. Well, this one's really cool, I did get an email over Christmas break, um, as far as, uh, the Indian Education for All, and, and there's gonna be an upcoming webinar, and they congratulated us on our work and wanted to, to meet with me, and I said, well, I'll get with principals and the people from that committee and whatnot when they get back, just because of the outstanding work that's gone on here for years, so we have kind of a recognition there going on, but there'll be more coming up with that, so I'll take it with these guys. Um, accreditation, Chris and I have been working on that, and they're brought to admin last week, there's getting to be our submission due dates, um, just the different requirements there, so digging into that, um, with admin, and I should have had the next thing. Accreditation and graduate profile, it's a little bit lower, those all go hand in hand, so I know we did a survey for graduate profile, and that's coming up due too, but Robyn's done quite a bit of work on that, and so, uh, we started talks on that last Friday. Um, those things. And then over break, as they have a look at a lot of just different policies, just different questions that admin teams have mostly, um, that's come up over the, the fall. So it gave me some time, uh, quiet time alone and just reading through some of those, and, and I know I got some updates from Sabrina, so I took those to them last Friday, will be following up tomorrow with some more work on the, the policies and just how to implement those. Um, there's E-Graph, Esther closeouts, we're, with OPI on that, um, and Brittany. So she did the bulk of the work, of course, and did a great job, so again, thank you. Calendar committee led my first one last Monday, uh, we had nineteen people there, um, three administrators, and then, uh, five committee people. And what I did really was just lay out a process that I've used before, that at some point I'll probably just maybe just bring that as one of my only topics here for my report on decision-making and just how to do parallel thinking and organized thinking, um, and decision-making. Uh, I've used it, uh, quite a few times now in the last few years, more than that I should say with my career, um, the last fifteen or so years. And I know I presented to my board, um, when I first used it in my last district, so they, they really liked it, it was really helpful, so anyway, we'll be using that procedure, we need to get next week, next, on the twentieth. Um, let's see. That's it.
And you are a principal mentor, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, um, finally got through that in November, so I'm a nationally certified principal mentor, and they told me I'm the only one in Montana, so that was.
Good job.
That's really good.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Alright. Thank you guys for all that. You're welcome. So at this time, we have to go, or I'm suggesting we go into a little session, we'll, uh, give Mr. O's evaluation.
Okay.
Okay.
That takes, it took me over a year. Long, long cloud for retirement.
We'll just be, uh, we'll come back.
They started doing.
I cranked my E-Web. Okay, we're back.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the minutes from the executive session.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any public opinion on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I propose that we add ten days of personal leave, front-loaded, per year to the superintendent's contract, and a three percent raise. Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any public opinion on this agenda item? Yes, sir. Any for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Serena.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect, with that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.